And the city's plan to issue bonds in connection with the Wooddale and Commercial Redevelopment Project area, roll call please.
Mayor Police.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here. We begin tonight with a public hearing for the issuance of bonds to finance the capital projects, including the water main and stormwater improvements for the Wooddale and Commercial Redevelopment Project area. This hearing is being held pursuant to the Bond Issue Notification Act and the Local Government Debt Reform Act in accordance with the Illinois law. The notice of this public hearing was printed in the Daily Herald newspaper on August ninth, two thousand and nineteen. The purpose of this hearing is to explain the reasons for the proposed bond issue and to permit persons desiring to be heard an opportunity to present written or oral testimony regarding the bond issue to the City Council. Mr. Wilson, would you please provide a summary of the purpose of the proposed bond issue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the purpose of this is, as you stated, around the Wooddale Road and Commercial Street area. So, the council desired and approved to redevelop the area of Wooddale Road and Commercial. The city established a TIF for this redevelopment project. As part of the redevelopment, certain infrastructure improvements are necessary. The city will begin issuing bonds in connection with the acquisition, construction, installation, and rehabilitation of those various capital projects. These capital projects include but are not limited to water main and stormwater improvements. The Bond Issue Notification Act requires that the city hold a public hearing to inform the public of the purpose and plan for the bond issue, which is what we're doing currently this evening. The city seeks to issue bonds in a not-to-exceed amount of three million, two hundred and fifty thousand. The bonds are authorized by the Local Government Debt Reform Act and will be payable from the incremental taxes derived from the TIF district along with other funds available. That is all I have, Mr. Mayor, at this time.
Thank you. Anyone interested in addressing the City Council regarding the proposed bond issue may do so at this time? You have to go up to the podium and you would have to get sworn in. Okay. Anyone else? All right, I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed bond issue.
Second.
Alderman Woods. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you. Okay. Next, call the City Council meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Police.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano. Alderman Roy Wesley. Alderman Messina.
Here. I declare a quorum. Please stand and join in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes of August fifteenth.
So, we'll... Second.
Okay, we have a mo... That was Eugene, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Mike's second. Questions, comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? That passes. Next to any citizens which should be heard on matters not listed on the agenda. Okay, written communiques, I do not have any. Under Mayor's report, first item, City Council censure of Alderman. Wooddale City Council has been informed that one of its members without authority improperly discussed personnel issues with certain staff members, including discussing increase in compensation and other strictly personnel matters. All of the Aldermen have been advised this conduct is inappropriate, and this particular Alderman was directly admonished to refrain from involving himself in personal matters. As a result of this conduct, do I have a motion to censure Alderman E. Wesley?
I'll make a motion to censor Alderman E. Wesley.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Followin'... Alderman Wesley, are you interested in responding at all? Okay. Is there any discussion? Let's take a roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley. Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Okay, and that passes. Next. Update to the Wooddale Skunk Grant Program Chief, are you taking this one?
Thanks, Mayor. We discussed this about a month ago. Council had given staff direction to extend another three thousand dollars for the grant funding. That funding is almost all expended. Right now, we currently have eight traps out and about seven hundred dollars remaining, and those locations will take up the remaining. Since then, we've had some additional interest. I think about five residents have asked about continuing the program, and we thought it was best that council decide if we gave some input, if we proceeded any further with it. Certainly, the manager does have some additional spending authority, and we're hopeful that if council did choose to continue this or give direction to additionally fund this, that it has slowed down a little bit, and perhaps up to six thousand would close out at the end of the season, but there's no guarantees on it. But so far, we've been at forty-two locations. They've captured forty-one different skunks, nineteen other animals, and as I mentioned, eight traps are still out. And the average per location is about two hundred and forty-five dollars that we're spending for each location on average. Some are a little less, some are more if they're successful and catching and are out there longer. So, just looking for some direction from the City Council.
Alderman Messina.
Could you repeat that amount per household?
The average is about two hundred and forty-five dollars per household. Each visit is sixty-five dollars. So, you have some that, you know, maybe in three visits, they're finding that there's not any skunk activity, or they're unable to determine that there's actual damage occurring. Some, you know, rise in the over four hundred dollars because they've been successful in capturing two or three skunks at certain locations. So, each location is different, but if you average out the forty-two locations and the amount spent, it's about two hundred and forty-five dollars per house for the location where the traps have been put.
Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve another six thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Alderman Sizmarsky.
Chief, do you have... Do they have a diagram of where these traps are being kept? Where the... Where the... Where the skunks are being caught? I mean, they have a topographical map. Do we have anything like that?
Now, are you talking like citywide?
Yeah, I mean, where... You said there's forty-one skunk. I mean, are they all in one section? Are they in two sections? Are they all...
No, they're all over the city, but I have a pretty detailed invoice tracking system that I've been using, so I could probably throw that on a Google map and show council, maybe in the manager's report, where they're spread out throughout the city. It'd be pretty quick.
All right. Alderman Messina.
Yeah, Chief, I know I've asked you this before, and you just mentioned it about the detailed billing, but i-is there an actual... Another checks and balances that we have in place to just make sure that... Not accusing them, but any company, that they're not just sending us invoices for visits not had? Like, are we doing ride-alongs? Are we doing any of this stuff to just make sure that what we're being built for matches services rendered?
Go ahead, Chief.
So, we're not doing any ride-alongs, but I've been in some regular communication with them when we've had a location that, let's say, two visits in a row, there's been no success. Generally, on the third visit, they will remove it. And we actually had like a location that all of a sudden it showed up still out there and questioned that, and they... The technician had actually provided notes saying, showing, you know, definite activity. And actually, at that location, they believe that someone in the neighborhood may have released the animal because there was apparent that it had trapped and there was stuff inside. So, i-if they go beyond the established guidelines, they have to kind of have a communication with us as far as how that goes. But we do track every invoice and also, you know, when traps are removed. And I've been much happier with their billing this year and the electronic process that we set up with them as opposed to the paper process last year.
Follow... Go ahead.
Just one last follow-up. I think it's definitely ran much better this year. I know, having explored that option, I think it might behoove us to just have some tips for people before calling in, right? So, maybe he came, I gave twenty-five dollars, which isn't the end of the world, but for some people, it might be the end of the world, and the person's spent about maybe five minutes looking underneath. It needs to be very clear that they're housed there, like maybe in our next newsletter before, like our spring one, we can say, "Before you spend the money and you engage, look for the... Here are some key things to look for," because all I got told was they're probably just passing through. And I could have gone under my deck myself and saved myself twenty-five dollars, so...
Go ahead, Chief.
Sure. I was just going to mention that, you know, last year, it was kind of based on just the residents' word, and we think that there was some places that maybe they went because things were... They just smelled a skunk at night. And we wanted to have the funds available for places that there was actually damage or burrowing occurring. And so, we did... Each year, we try and make it better. This year, we added to the voucher, there has to be evidence of burrowing or damage occurring. We can always add to that next year, even a little bit further explanation of what to look for before you do it, but ultimately...
You'll see them. I think people's... I mean, I saw them, and now my neighbors saw them, but nobody had proof that they were burrowing, which, so we don't qualify. But maybe upfront, you know, they're natural in our environment. You're going to see them, but maybe just if we could put some more clarity to that.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Alderman Catalano.
Yeah, Chief, so, for instance, when you said that they've been going out to a few homes several times, so does the trapping company recommend, if, for instance, if this skunk is going underneath the shed or burrowing somewhere, do they tell them to correct... rectify the problem, so they don't have to keep going back and catching the same, you know, different skunks?
Go ahead, Chief.
Yes, I know that is occurring. I even got a couple invoices that came through zero dollars that were for skunk consultation. Certainly, I know this company, if they see some, you know, they're a business, and if they can offer a service to someone, they may do that to a resident. But they are giving tips when they talk to people, from my understanding. And the one resident that I talked to, they had some questions about the program. She had questions about the baiting and everything, and she said they were very knowledgeable and offered her a lot of tips.
So, if they give them the tips... Sorry. So, if they give them the tips and they repeat it, shouldn't we say, "No, you haven't fixed the problem"?
Go ahead, Chief.
That's something we could consider in the future. This year, we've only had one location that after they did successfully catch some the first time, they did... They did in the last month, recome in, pay a new deposit, and they've caught... They've caught two more out there since then. Some places, there's not concrete recommendations. It's just, you know, they're going under the deck where it's maybe not a burrowing or some type situation.
I'll speak from experience, Chief. So, I caught a skunk and a possum over between... So, I talked to all my neighbors around me, so it's between the six of us. They keep... They're digging under the bushes in my neighbor's house, and then they shoot over to the other house, and we see them. They've caught two. The traps are still sitting there. Couple times, they set the traps off, and they came back out and reset them. And they moved them because I told them, I go... I walked right out, and the thing was right in front of my face. And so, they moved the trap. I go, "I go, 'Those last two skunks are laughing at you. They're just walking right past those traps.'" Literally, I just saw them go past the traps at least twice, and my wife's seen it once.
Well, and as when they gave a presentation last year, you know, it's kind of an imperfect science, kind of like trying to catch Chance the Snapper. It's not always that successful, but...
Right.
Overall, I think they've been fairly successful, and I, like I said, I've been more pleased with the company this year than I was last year.
Then, one last question.
Go ahead, Alderman.
So, one last question. So, when you say they catch other animals, that's not under this program, so we don't pay for that, correct?
Go ahead, Chief.
We do have to pay for the rebaiting of the trap and whatever. It's not intended to catch other animals, and the bait that they use is intended to catch skunks over other animals, but most commonly you'll see is a possum that's going after it. So, there are some of those, but we still have to pay... We have to pay them for their technicians coming out. It's kind of a... Kind of a cost of doing business.
Thank you.
Right, because we're supposed to check the traps every morning. They don't want anything sitting in the trap for over twenty-four hours, and they come out right away, and they did take the possum away.
All right, we have a motion. Oh, Alderman... Sorry. Alderman Jacob.
This is actually to the City Manager. Jeff, we had that one property Randy and I told you about. Is that going to be part of the skunk program that we're doing that? Or is that...
It's actually separate from the skunk program, but we are addressing that issue with the trapping.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
And that passes. One other thing, just thank the police chief and his department staff. Basically, I'm sure you've heard that we were tied for third in the safest communities in Illinois. So, basically, we're in the top five. Kudos to you guys. Go ahead.
I wasn't planning to talk on that, but that's a nice recognition for the city as a whole, and, you know, we're proud of what we do, but it's the whole community, and it's not just the PD. It's the community groups and people looking out for their neighborhoods and calling us when they see things happen, and it's a total team effort, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, City Manager Report.
Two items tonight. First, we have the city garage... The citywide garage sale is September thirteenth through the fifteenth. If you're a resident at home interested in participating, you can get some more information on the city website or stop up to the City Clerk's office. Second item, congratulations to Wooddale School District Seven, who once again received another Kaboom grant to build a new playground, this time at Westview. For those of you who got the chance to volunteer and participate in last year's event, it was a really nice community event. There was a ton of people that came out there to help out, and they got that park done in one day. It was really amazing. If you're interested, if anybody's interested in volunteering, you can. The city's got a bunch of information up on their Facebook page, and I'm sure School District Seven has some information, too. And that is on October fourth. That concludes my report.
Jeff. Thank you. Alderman Sorrentino on that.
Does the grant cover the entire cost of the playground?
Mr. Mermis.
I believe so. Last year, I know we financially participated. I did not receive a request, so I assume it does, but I'm not one hundred percent sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Woods.
Yeah, typically, the winner of the grant has to come up with a certain percentage of the money, but like ninety percent of it's done by Kaboom. I think the Wooddale School District Seven had to come up with ten or fifteen thousand dollars, which they raised outside.
Nice. All right. So, we have... That concludes your report. No consent agenda under committee chair reports, planning and zoning. Alderman Jacob.
One report, ordinance repealing the city's stormwater and flood plain management regulations in chapter seventeen of the City of Wooddale Municipal Code.
That's your motion?
That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Woods.
Yeah. Actually, I was... Before we got into this, was going to make a motion to table this. There's some things that... So, the DuPage counting stormwater part of it is pretty cut and dry, but when you look at chapter, whatever that is.
Ten?
Eight in the UDO, chapter seventeen, section eight, transferring all that language... Eliminating all that language, that doesn't necessarily transfer to section ten of the new code. There are quite a few differences when you start to compare them. Really didn't know that there was going to be that many changes, so I personally have some current concerns. I would ask the motioner if he would entertain a motion to table it to the next regular council meeting so that we could take a look at those changes. I think some of them were fairly significant.
Alderman Jacob, you were the motioner.
Yeah, I would amend my motion to table.
To table? And Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley.
I just have one question. You're tabling it back to council, or you're going to table it back to committee? Just to the regular next committee meeting so that we can get some clarification on all the rest of this.
You said council.
Council.
Council, okay.
Council, correct.
All right, so, we're going to table. Sorry, you can go to council. Either way, we'll get the questions answered.
Right.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, table. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Sorrentino.
No report to safety, Mayor. However, I'd ask the council to look over the handouts that were given a few weeks ago. We may be bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Committee, Alderman Catalano.
I have two, Mayor. Approval amended to Dalewood Avenue and Gilbert Drive Stormwater Project in the amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five. That is my motion.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Question, Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, so, we look at to repave that street? Is that what we look at?
Mr. Mermis, go ahead.
Yes, we are looking to do that. A lot of times when we do this type of work, we don't necessarily do this, but this time it was kind of a twofold approach. Number one, that street received very heavy damage due to a lot of the work in the area. Number two, we had some cost savings throughout the project, so it's kind of... It's a win-win if the council wants to do this.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley. Follow.
Two follows.
Yes.
So, is Gilbert going to get a heavy damage, too, and we're going to redo that street?
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
I can't guarantee that it won't, but I don't anticipate that. Right now, we're just talking about Dalewood. We can cross that bridge when we get to.
And when it comes to Gilbert, they're not even going all the way down just yet, and we're going to be doing more work on that street in a year and a half, I believe.
Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Forest Preserve Drive, we are eliminating probably a hundred feet on both ends of Forest Preserve Drive, and we are not regrinding the surface. So, I guarantee you, we will be back within a year redoing another hundred feet on each end. So, if you want to spend a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, why don't we just have the contractor that's doing Forest Preserve Drive expand that hundred feet or two hundred feet and do the whole street so we don't have to come back in a year and redo it?
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
I'm sure Assistant Director Lang can look at that, but I do know that Forest Preserve Drive is part of the resurfacing program in a few weeks, the main drag of it.
Go ahead, follow.
But it ain't the whole street. It's a section. The point is, both ends are falling apart, too. And I'm just saying, almost that whole block's going to be done. Why not extend it to the other two ends and maybe to our feet? And it's falling apart because we'll be back there in two years redoing that again. So, why do we piecemeal it? That's what I'm just saying.
Okay, and you know what? Next week, strategic planning, I believe we're going to be talking about...
But the contract was awarded.
That... That one was... Was that a patch? Mr. Lang, who wants to...
Yes, I think there is anyone.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. That contract has been awarded. It's certainly something we could look into adding on additional patches along that block and increasing the length, if that's something the council would like.
It was part of the... Which package?
That's the two thousand and nineteen pavement patching program, separate from the fiscal year road resurfacing.
See, and that's, again, pavement patching or resurfacing. I mean, some blocks get three patches, other... And then they don't.
Right, yeah, just a way to extend the useful life. Obviously, we can't resurface every street in town, even though we'd like to. It's just a way to kind of extend the useful life of the pavement.
And what I was going to say, that's a... Basically, a policy decision, strategic planning, be next week. Alderman Woods, go ahead. You were next.
I was confused at what Alderman Wesley was saying. So, right now, the difference between Dalewood, damage on the street and on Gilbert is Gilbert, they're actually cutting out the street and burying the pipe in the street where they didn't do that, and the damage was caused by accessing the parkways. But that being said, are you saying that we should regrind and resurface all of Gilbert? Or Forest Preserve? Forest Pres...
Go ahead.
So, Forest Preserve Drive, when that contract was awarded, I personally went out there, looked at those streets, and the markings are out there. Both ends, the mill to another hundred feet, is stopping. From Prospect to Forest Preserve Drive, at that end, we aren't doing it. It's like two hundred feet. What we're doing to the rest of the street are repatching it. So, why would we not piecemeal together? How much more could it be to do it? I mean, because we'll be back there in two years digging it up and redoing that patch job on both ends. I mean...
I do have a question, Mr. Lang. So, on this patch pavement program for this year, was there four streets, five streets? I don't recall. Do you...
There's four streets.
Four streets.
Plan for patching.
So, if we give one, do everything, the other three then don't get it. Again, that beca... Why is one street getting the full resurface, and the other three, we're going to get calls and say, "Are we the redheaded stepchild"? I know, I understand, Gene, but it becomes a policy decision, right? So, you know, because, you know, all of a sudden, you're going to get calls, "Oh, he's a friend of that guy's," or "This guy." So, it becomes policy decision. Do we... Do we stop patching altogether and just, when we do a street, resurface? Or are we going to continue to do patches? Unfortunately, I'm not a big fan of the patches myself, but there's only so much money to go around, as we're going to see when budget comes up.
Absolutely, and these streets are surveyed by city staff, and we try to identify the worst areas of the street, and it goes first.
Right, and, believe me, I would love to resurface every street. That would be awesome. Alderman Woods, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, I was going to say, so, I mean, both are in my ward, so I'm sure I want both of them done. That being said, there's a reason... both of them done. That being said, there's, there's a reason, there's a reason that we do that study every five years, and that's to point out those streets. And Alderman, Eugene Wesley's point is, you know, two years ago, we rushed to get some stuff, bigger patches, which then makes it look even worse than it actually is, whereas probably a year from now, we're gonna be doing the street anyway. So, sometimes our knee-jerk reaction to do some of this interim patching, we become our own worst enemy. And since we create that, we spend the money for that study, you know, we prioritize the streets based on that study. We should continue to do that unless it's a case of, like on Dalewood, where they pretty much added, probably took out seven to 10 years of useful life on that road during construction.
And all those streets, Forest Preserve, Gilbert. So, basically, a little further down here, we're gonna talk about the flood project, and these streets are gonna be in that second or third phase. So, resurfing the whole street right now, and then three years from now, we're gonna go in and dig up to put in our new stormwater pipes. We're gonna just dig up the money we spent. Again, strategic planning next week, Saturday morning. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Have we shared that our plans for the improvements of the storm surge system with the company that's conducting the street survey, and they're gonna take that into account when they help us develop our five-year maintenance plan?
Right.
Can we just have them do a price?
To what? To add it on?
Can we just get ballpark figure what it would cost of this Forest Preserve Drive? A hard feet?
And then, what are we gonna do with the other streets? We're gonna, we're gonna start a problem here. You do one street, we don't do the other three. It's, you know, we're gonna start getting residents getting upset. Dalewood, unfortunately, that entire block was under construction, and it was under a war zone while they put in the new pipe. So, that's a different case. Gilbert, only a partial right now, but we're gonna be back in there within a year and a half, probably two years at the most, and we're gonna be digging over there again. And Forest Preserve and all those streets. Alderman Jacob, go ahead.
I have a few questions on this one. My first question is, I, I know we had some kind of issue with ALAMP as far as timing, and we're now issuing them a new contract to do this street, or is this contract issued?
Mr. Mermis?
This is not a new contract. This is an addendum. It's actually saving money to go out with an independent firm, separate from ALAMP. ALAMP's out there. They'll finish out that job. We'll get quantity, you know, better quantity pricing, so it's just an amendment to the current contract.
Okay.
And, and then, just so you know, some of the delays, there probably will be some liquidated damages on it. That's separate. Go ahead, Alderman Jacob.
And then, the next thing, I mean, we have a total bid price of the $132,985, but I see it excludes bonds and permit, excludes layout, excludes testing. There's a few things it excludes. Do we know what the cost of all those, and how much additional that's gonna be?
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
No, I don't have that cost offhand, but I can certainly ask for that. And some of that may be included in the current contract also that they're under.
Alderman Woods, go ahead.
Yeah, everything except the testing would be included under the original contract.
Do you have follow-up, Alderman Jacob?
No, that's it.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call. Pardon me?
Could I lean read the motion? I can't forget.
It's approval to add, to the, of the addendum to Dalewood Avenue and Gilbert Drive Stormwater Project not to exceed $132,985.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes. Next?
Next is approval of final payment to Builders Pavin LLC for the fiscal year end in 2020. Roads program in the amount of $166,520.25. That is my motion.
Second. Motion, we have a second. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes. That concludes your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Finance and administration, Alderman Woods?
I have one report, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, alternative revenue source, series 2020 and one or more series taxable or tax exempt to the City of Wooddale, DuPage County, Illinois in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $9,250,000 for the purpose of financing the cost of certain capital projects within the city and paying for costs related thereto.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Questions on this? And for those at home, this is for the stormwater project, correct? Mr. Mermis?
Correct. The multi-year stormwater project that we're already in process of constructing.
Right. And for those residents that are listening, so, we could go off for low-interest loan from the state, but unfortunately, if we do that, we'll probably have to take a break next year and do no work. So, have the work continue. We're going this route. That's, that's what... Alderman Jacob, you have a question?
Yeah, in, in the contract, unpack it, page 49, there's some kind of petition. What, what is that petition for? There's no signatures or anything on it, it's not...
Mr. Wilson? I still can't get used to the beard breath. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
So, it's page 49?
Page 49.
Yeah, page, yeah, page 49.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What it is, is if somebody were to object to the issuance of these bonds, they would have to collect enough signatures to effectively force us to be placed on, and make it a referenda item on a general election. So, there's language within this ordinance spelling out how many of those signatures they would have to get, how they would have to present them, and they would have to go on the next consolidated general election. I believe there's one in March of 2020. So, if they were to collect the signatures necessary, you would then get put to a vote of the entire population of Wooddale as to whether or not to issue those bonds. Should they not collect those signatures and present them in the manner accordingly, then we just proceed on as we have in the past.
Okay, thank, thank you. I, I just wasn't sure what that was for. I was a little confused on that. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes. And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, airport noise. Alderman Jacob?
One report, good news for the community. The Chicago Department of Aviation announced that it officially will start the new overnight rotation Sunday, November 3rd through May of 2020. As scheduling allows with new construction to continue until 2021, those hours are between 10, 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM.
It's more like 10:30 and 5:00, but they cheat a little bit.
11 and 4. But who's counting?
Right. And then, Stormwater Commission?
I'll report, Mayor.
We could leave that in there because they are a subcommittee of the greener tomorrow, so if they have any items, they could be presented during that, so...
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Next, approval of list of bills for September 5th. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the list of bills for September 5th, 2019, in the amount of $690,673.48.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Alderman Jacob?
Yeah, Brad, I know I asked you this on check, the sequence 19. The check says it's good for Charles Kelly Koffer, but you said Retail Coach. And I was kind of just doing a little research, so Charles Kelly Koffer is the owner of the company? We make the check directly to him, not to Retail Coach?
Mr. Wilson, you wanna take that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the oversimplified answer is yes. I believe it's the way the, the company has set up, the corporate structure. I believe it's a DBA, and so that's why the checks are made out to him. And then, he runs his business accordingly underneath that umbrella, so...
All right, follow-up?
No, that's it. I just wanted some clarification on that.
Alderman Wesley, you're next.
Is the ALAMP-Gilbert bill that's up there for ALAMP?
Go ahead.
Okay. Is that money for, not Gilbert, it's payout for Dalewood, right?
Who can answer that? Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
ALAMP is not on this list of bills?
Yeah. You have a page number?
No.
Mr. Lang, do you know? I, I don't recall myself. Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes. We have no items to be referred, no executive session.
I think our city manager will be very disappointed if he had a executive session planned.
We have one item for informational.
Happy to report the Bears are up 3-0.
Okay, I need, I need a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now that Jake's made his first touchdown.